May I call the meeting of the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education to order on November 13th, 2025? In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in the newspaper and on the district website on January 8th, 2025. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building in the schools and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on November 5th, 2025, The Daily Record, The Star Ledger, and Parsippany Focus, Tap into Parsippany, Patch, and the district website. This regular public board meeting is being video recorded as per Bylaw 0168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and our video on the go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have the attendance roll call, please?
Mrs. Abraham.
Here.
Mr. Barrios.
Here.
Mrs. Delafave.
Here.
Mr. DeVito.
Here.
Mrs. Mayor.
Here.
Mr. Raya.
Here.
Dr. Wright.
Here.
Mrs. Chappell.
Here.
And Mrs. Cogan.
Thank you very much. This brings us to our student committee reports, and we've got Sarvash, who's going to help actually cover both high schools this time.
Good evening. Here are the latest happenings at PHS. We are currently in our student council hosted Spirit Week. Today was Sweats on Sweats Day. The sophomore class hosted their service night on November 12th, and the senior class is hosting their annual volleyball competition, in which anyone can join and create a team for $5 on November 20th. The math team had their AMC competition last week and their NJ Math League competition last Tuesday. Robotics team is having a competition on the 15th, and as for sports, our marching band came sixth in Nationals with a score of 88.2. The girls varsity volleyball team had their state competition on November 3rd. The boys varsity soccer team had state game against Madison High School on November 4th. As for the Hills, they're having an upcoming event for their toy drive, which is going to be held sometime in November. The PHS players are hosting Mullier's Play called Tartouf on November 20th, 21st, and 22nd. Their marching band won fourth and earned the best percussion at the USB bands' IIANJ state competitions with a score of 87.8. The volleyball team advanced in state playoffs by defeating Ridgefield Park. Their girls soccer team played against Governor Livingston in the first round of playoffs. The football team had two consecutive wins against Morris Hills and Parsippany High School, and the seniors won their powder puff game on November 10th. A few Parsippany Hills events that are happening this week is the three-on-three basketball tournament on 12th and the badminton tournament on the 13th.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Thank you. So that brings us to a special presentation for tonight, and we've got Tara Snellings from the Parsippany Education Foundation.
Good evening. Oh, thank you. I'm honored to be here tonight on behalf of the Parsippany Education Foundation to present a check supporting this year's grant recipients. Since its founding in 1996, the foundation has awarded more than $500,000 in grants and scholarships to enrich the learning experiences of students across all 14 schools in the Parsippany Troy Hills School District. This year, the foundation approved 22 grants totaling almost $27,000, each one designed to spark curiosity, creativity, and connection in our classrooms. Students will soon enjoy experiences like an illustrator residency at Lake Parsippany School, hands-on science through building living terrariums at Troy Hills School, and creative expression at the Morris County School of Glass, where PHS students will explore art and photography through glassblowing. We're also supporting projects that build community, such as Play Connect Grow at Brook Lawn, which is using giant games to foster social-emotional learning, and High School Buddies, which pairs older student mentors with younger readers at Rockaway Meadow School. From Literacy in Action at Mount Tabor to a school-wide One School, One Book Celebration at Littleton, these grants will bring learning to life in a meaningful way. On behalf of the foundation, congratulations to all of our grant recipients. Your creativity and dedication continue to make Parsipony a place where innovation thrives and our students truly shine.
So, Mrs. Abraham and Mr. DeVito, please accept the check. Thank you so much for your generosity. Excellent. Okay. That brings us to our correspondence. Is there any correspondence to become before the board?
No correspondence.
Thank you so much. As for unfinished business is next. Any topics for anybody? Okay. I will talk to the fact that in the ad hoc committee, we did talk about having a meeting with the mayor and the council, and we're working towards that in the new year. So, just to close out on that issue. That brings us to committee reports. I will start with Mrs. Delafave.
Hi. So, this boards' co-curricular committee met on November 11th. Myself, Mr. Barrios, Mrs. Mayor, Mr. Rickert, Ms. Benos, Mr. D Bernard, and Mr. Huff were in attendance. We discussed the High Hills game that just passed, and it was a big success. There were lots of alumni who were present, lots of fun connecting with all of the students on both sides of the field. Everyone was excited about the camaraderie that that brought to the town and the schools. We also discussed middle school teams. I kind of asked the question of how our numbers are at the middle school level, because we, I know numbers have dropped in some of the sports and other activities at the high school, so I just kind of wanted to get a feel for what we were doing to maybe bolster that program if there was more of an opportunity for us to welcome more students. They assured me that they've been collaborating with those coaches as well. They have clinics for field hockey. Little Vikings attend all the home games. They have youth wrestling matches before the Hills and High. They set up Brook Lawn for central baseball and softball games. They have athletic nights as well. So, you know, those were really great responses, just to show that we're, you know, community outreach and trying to keep our numbers up, because, you know, sports and other activities are an important part of the student experience at Parsipony in both high schools. I also just wanted to know a little about the booster clubs and how those functioned with regards to the school district, if they were completely separate, and I figured they were, but they are completely separate, but I just wanted to put it out there. There's a lot of booster clubs, and they kind of run a little bit differently, so just to make sure that they're maintaining good budgeting and that they're practicing good use of facilities and fundraising adhering to our rules as well. There were lots of updates for the fall sports. I won't read all of them, but just some notes. The marching band at the high school took second place for their group at the state competitions. Our boys soccer team, like they had noted, they won the conference title for the first time in 22 years. All the sports at least had a couple wins and really pulled together with each other by the end. Let's see, at the Hills, same thing, you heard about the marching band's success that they had. The girls volleyball did well. The tennis, they finished top 10 in Morris County, and they have leveled up to the American Division. So, all of it was a nice meeting, and I see what our students are up to. Any questions?
Yes, Raya.
Just had one question, more of a comment, really. You mentioned about the middle school teams. I seem to recall there was an article that came out like two weeks ago about the Brook Lawn cross-country team. They like finished, I think, like fourth in the county or state. I forget the numbers, but they did very well. I just wanted to note that, because, you know, I just got a new coach this year, so.
Maybe that'll keep them on that enough for their numbers.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any liaison reports? Any liaison reports?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
I have no report for buildings and grounds. Liaison, wait, no, liaison report? No. Okay.
Nothing to report. Thank you very much. Mr. Raya?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Mrs. Abraham?
I don't have anything to report, but I did want to take a couple of minutes and just say a thank you to the Parsipony Education Foundation. I was able to sit in on their grant discussions, and it was extremely well-done and very thoroughly discussed. I was very privileged to be able to sit in on that, and I just wanted to thank the entire board of the Parsipony Education Foundation for allowing me to be there, and I just wanted to make sure that we appreciate that, because they don't just sit there for 20 minutes and decide these grants. They took hours to decide these grants before they vote on them, and I just wanted to make sure that we appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Mayor?
Human Resources met on November 11th. Present were myself, Mrs. Abraham, Dr. Wright, Mr. Rickert, and Mrs. Benos. Were staffing up, there were some confidential personnel items, and then there were some staffing updates, new hires, and open positions. Mr. Rickert said that we're doing very well filling these positions. Most current open teaching positions have candidates that are viable for the position. Principals and supervisors that continue to interview and recommend for those positions. Powers and teacher transfers. As students move into the district, sometimes we need to place powers and positions to meet the needs of these students and the requirements of their IEPs. Sometimes the powers need to be transferred. It just has to be, sometimes the child is no longer in that building or has aged out and gone to the other school, so they have to be transferred. There are also teacher transfers. The committee realizes that teacher transfers that occur during the year are very difficult. They're disruptive to the SCAF, to the students, to the school, but there are times when it has to be done out of necessity. It's not something that is done lightly, let's just say that. Powers and long-term subs have been increasingly difficult to find and to keep. The committee discussed potential solutions and ideas to address these staffing issues, and as we all know, Local 32 agreement was ratified. Yay, yay, yay to the whatever team did that negotiations. You did a great job, and we are working to adjust the new salary guides and retro pay for the last year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mrs. Mayor? Okay. Thank you. So, I've got two committee reports and one liaison report. So, for the ad hoc committee, we met on November 10th. Present were myself, Mr. Raya, Mrs. Cogan, Dr. Chase, and Mrs. Benos. Three topics were discussed, first being the school funding statement, making sure that we had the opportunity to provide feedback on behalf of the school district to the state, so they have our feelings on what is being discussed at the state level. And then we also covered the parent advocacy document, which was posted this week throughout our district-wide communications, putting out their information around the difficulties that are facing our district, what we have done to help to address them, as well as how parents can advocate for these different topics at the state and local levels. And then lastly, we covered the meeting with the mayor that will, again, as I mentioned earlier, talk about, will connect with them in the beginning of the new year, once we have we are complete. Any questions on ad hoc? Okay. Next one is the finance committee. We met tonight. Present were myself, Mr. DeVito, Mr. Raya, and Mrs. Abraham. The big topic of discussion was our budget, to no surprise, and all the cost drivers. There are a number of significant drivers that, sorry, Dr. McHugh was there also. Dr. McHugh covered in our previous committee of the whole, just in a little bit more detail, as more information has come to light. So, he and his team are diligently working through all of those topics to help develop the appropriate budget that we need. There are a number of other topics that we touched on, including funding and how that can be arranged, the state aid formula, how the SNAP benefits and how that's being covered, pre-K funding, retirement tier changes, and the impact that could be having to our district as policies are changing at the state level, our non-CDL driver opportunities, the audit deadline that we are facing, and the difficulty of not having some of the federal-level information, solar panels that we have on some of our schools, as well as the security refund as we resolve staffing issues at the security level. Are there any questions from the finance? Yes?
Did we, was there any update on medical costs? Medical care?
Dr. McHugh?
No, we do not have an update. We, Colleen and myself, will be calling our broker tomorrow to find out.
Thank you.
Yes. Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for letting me sit in on that meeting. It was extremely thorough and well-done, and thank you for all the information that you shared.
Of course. It's one of my favorite committees to be on, because it's such a robust discussion every time. So, thank you for attending. And then my liaison report is for the ESC. So, we met last night, and it was, again, a nice update on the progress that they're making in finding new homes for their students that remain. Again, from an educational perspective, they're looking to close that portion of their services June 30th. They have plans identified, so they're making motions for that. There are other services that they're providing, specifically the bulk of their services through transportation will continue, so no concerns there to highlight to anybody. Any questions? Okay. Yes?
I just wanted to take a moment to mention that the NJ SBA delegate assembly is on November 22nd, so if anybody wants to attend it virtually, or if they wanted to go to Mercer County College, then you get the opportunity to vote as well. So, just wanted to put that out.
No. I think you have to be a delegate.
Oh, you have to be. Thanks for that correction.
Yeah, no problem. But thank you very much for the reminder. And so, you can attend virtually if you're not able to go in person, but there is registration required. It's all information available on the NJ SBA site. Yes, Dr. Wright?
Can I add to that? Attendance at one of the NJ SBA delegate assemblies is one of the requirements for becoming a certified board member, and that's a less frequently held, it's only, it's a biannual event, and so if anyone is working on their certification, that would be a good one to attend.
Excellent. Thank you for the reminder.
And as long as they're offered virtually, you know, sometimes you can't, you have to go wherever it is. There are some meetings that are in Trenton that are really, you know, early in the morning you have to get there, but sometimes they are virtual, so keep your eyes open for when they are virtual.
Yeah. That flexibility is incredibly, that flexibility is very important, and we need to seize those opportunities. Absolutely. Okay. Excellent. All right. So, then that takes us to the next page, which I'm turning to. Okay. Approval of our minutes, regular and executive minutes of October 30th, 2025. May I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVito, second. Dr. Wright? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Delafave?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes, to regular, abstain from executive.
And Mrs. Cogan.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to our superintendent's bulletin, number seven. Dr. Chase?
Thank you, Mrs. Chappell. Just want to echo the sentiments for our ed foundation. That's a significant amount of money, and we very much appreciate the support. I know a lot of work goes into reviewing these grants, having served on ed committees myself, so I just want to let you know that we really appreciate that, and please share that with the committee. I also want to recognize all the teachers who put in these grants. You know, they're just constantly being innovative and creative with the ways in which to engage our students, so I wanted to recognize everybody who is the recipient of a grant. We appreciate the time you took to do those applications as well. You know, there's been some talk about budget today, as referred out from the finance committee. So, we are officially in budget season, and as we begin this work, we're really preparing for many of the pressures that many school districts throughout the state of New Jersey are facing. Those include rising healthcare costs, transportation cost increases, required services that our students need, and then we also have some long-range impacts of enrollment trends. The challenge with the budget is that these expenses are raising at a rate well beyond the 2% tax cap levy and the revenue that we're bringing in as a school district. So, it's very difficult to balance budgets, and you probably have seen some of that last year with several school districts having to do layoffs of staff. So, I'm not trying to be an alarmist here, but Dr. McHugh and I and the finance committee have a lot of work to do, and one of the things that I will be doing is making a concerted effort to really communicate the challenges of this budget. And actually, this month, I have just written a focus article that will talk about the school budget and how funding is calculated and given to schools, and also what that looks like for Parsipony. So, the board has already sent out communication to the committee as well. We don't want this to be a surprise to anybody. We want to get ahead of this, so that's why we're talking about it, and there will be updates at every board meeting moving forward until the budget is passed. So, I welcome everybody who has any questions or wants to be engaged to take part in that, because it's a community budget to support the children who live here, and it's very challenging to make it equal on both ends. But Dr. McHugh and I are committed for the task, and we're going to work deliberately to make sure that the information is shared, not just with our community, but also with the staff and the district as well. No decisions have been made at this time. We're in the very, very, very early stages, but over the coming months, when we look at this budget and we're getting all of the information from our department heads, our supervisors, and our principals, we're going to be making sure that the requests and what we are able to keep really align with our instructional values and really keep centered to this work, the importance of student well-being. So, I wanted to just put that out there, because that's something I'm going to be talking about at every board meeting moving forward. The other thing I want to talk about is an event I attended on Monday for Veterans Day. Mrs. Cogan was there, Tuesday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, Ms. Cogan was there, Ms. Abraham was there, Ms. Benos and I were there. We attended the township's Veteran Day memorial event. We had several members of the community and veterans there. It was absolutely lovely, respectable, respectful, and meaningful tribute to those who serve our country. We also had our choir and our band who were in attendance and performed, and they did a phenomenal job as well, and I want to thank them and our directors for preparing them so well. The final item on my superintendent report is to move items in the bulletin, 1 through 43, and addendum items 44 through 60, and a read-in. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. And that brings us to our secretary's report. Dr. McHugh?
Okay. So, if you note on page 10, we have motions 20 through 23, which are the finance motions, including our secretary's report and our treasurer's report, that show healthy balances and all accounts are in a positive range, so. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions on their secretary's report? All right. Is there any other new business? Dr. Wright?
Yes. Thank you. I would just like to say thank you to Communications and Ad Hoc for producing and disseminating that important information on the budget and funding, and I would like to say thank you to Dr. Chase. I appreciate your saying you're going to be putting out further information. As we've seen kind of public response to this information is that this is really complex, how we get the funding from the state, how our 2% works, what's going, and how the pilot affects that. The more information and the more understanding our public has about that, the better prepared we all can be to support our schools. And the actual new business, I would like to strongly encourage anyone here and viewing to submit comments to the Department of Education's public survey, and also to reach out to local legislators and let your voices be heard on school funding issues.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Any other new business? All right. That brings us to hearing of the public. So, at this time, if there is anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern right over there, and state your name for the record, and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful if you would like to address the board to please come up now and sign in so that you are ready when the first speaker is finished. As a reminder, we are video recording this meeting. If you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask that you not provide your home address, but rather give only the name of the municipality in which you live. If you are a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments, and are referred to Bylaw 168 for further information regarding the videotaping of our meetings. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay. Just sign in over at the lectern first. And just as a reminder, you will have your three minutes to speak. Each of you will finish, and then if there's any response required, we'll address them after the fact or after the meeting.
My name is Farhad. I grew up in Parsipony, and I moved away and moved back a couple years ago, and now my kids are coming to these schools. I just wanted to, I guess, superintendent, you explained, I think, some of my questions, but you sent out the fiscal challenges facing our schools, and I guess my first question was going to be, in East Hanover, they have a resident checking system. I don't know if you're familiar, because some students go to certain school districts, and they don't actually live there. That's something that East Hanover does, and I was going to ask if that's something that would ever be considered. It's called a resident checking system. And then, my second question was if, is there a system in place, like if the classrooms exceed 30 students, like is there going to be a cap? Like, I know on that email it said there's a cap right now of 25. Will there be a system in place that ensures that kids get the proper attention? And do I wait for an answer, or should I add my next question?
You will all finish your comments.
Okay, I got you.
And then if there's anything to respond to, we'll address it here at the end of all conversations.
Okay.
Or after the meeting.
Okay. And then, what was my last one? Okay. And my last one was with the pilot. I know it said that there is, the school district doesn't receive any revenue from the project unless the town government shares the pilot funding. So, I know you said this is the early stages, but is there something that the parents or, like, the residents can do to, I know they said that to write letters to your local legislature. I just want to see if there's something that parents can do, and if there's any way to help move this along. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone.
My name is Chris Bottas. I got two beautiful children in this district. I've been here 10 years. I own an outpatient mental health substance abuse facility. I employ 30 people. I understand there's a lot of challenges, but I think it's very important that we all work as a team. I'm not here to criticize everybody. I know politics, I don't like politics. One thing I do like is to make sure our school district, my children, everybody here that's out here wants the best for our community. However, though, I understand that you talked about rising healthcare costs. My wife's a teacher. You know, their administration, she didn't get an increase in her benefits because the administration worked with different brokers. You have to put the time and effort in, you have to get quotes, you have to put the due diligence in. You can save money. You have to be fully transparent with the budget. I also, like I said, I own a business, so, but I understand inflation. I understand costs are going up and stuff like that, but we need to be fully transparent with our budget. So, I would like to know what the budget is. We have a lot of high administrative costs. We've got high enrollment with teacher to student ratio is, is, is crazy. My wife's a teacher. How can one teacher manage 24 children, especially in your first grade? You know, their attention span is very, very difficult. So, there has to be ways to take a step back, analyze everything, and let's really try to make a difference in this community. Parsippany is a great town. Congratulations, 25th for North Bell Elementary School. That's a very good, uh, good, great report, right? But, we really need to, you know, we talked about this pilot program. I don't believe the pilot program is the, the key factor. Obviously, it sends shockwaves through the community, right? From the response and everything. But, we, I would love to sit down, look at over, look at the budget. Let's go from top to bottom. Let's focus on the specific needs, look at, identify the costs that are really impacting our bottom line. Because we, you guys have a big budget. That, I'm telling you, we don't, we don't, our taxes are going up tremendous. Our, our, our taxes is, goes to the school, 60-plus percent. So, we need to take a look, dive deep, put the time and effort in. And I think we really need to start saving money in different areas. So, um, that's really, I mean, I would, I wish that there was kind of a, a back and forth discussion here. I know that you said that we could talk after, because I don't know if you're going to be able to answer everybody's questions here, because they're going to have some really good questions and concerns. But, at the end of the day, it's all about being transparent. It's not easy, but let's dive deep into this budget, and let's really see where we can save, and where's this waste of money going? Because I guarantee you, there's a lot of waste going. So, hopefully, we can kind of work together here and make a difference. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anja Ristich. I'm a 10-year resident as well. Thank you for spending your time and your evenings here. So, my wife's been here for her whole life. She went to school here. My kids go to school here, first grade and soon wanting kindergarten. We're concerned about a lot of, with the no more caps in the classroom. You know, I want to help out as a parent. I read everything about the pilot programs. However, I think we need to be educated as to how does our district compare to expense of other districts of similar size or even smaller? So, we have ratios to see how do we compare. I don't want to go running with a pitchfork to Town Hall and then, then to tell me, "Well, you don't know what you're talking about." Here, here, here. So, I'd appreciate if I could become educated, share with me information, please, and with the rest of the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name is Norali Patel. I am the new owner of the Goddard School of Parsippany. We want to come here today to introduce ourselves as we are part of a small educational community as well. It really does start at early childhood before it comes on to you guys. So, we definitely want to help you guys as much as we can. With that being said, we have our director, Leila, here that's going to talk to you guys.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leila Ambro. We're coming here today with kind of positive idea. We're teaching our students to be a part of the community, and we're teaching them to be proud Parsippany residents. A good number of our students will be going to the public school next year. We're trying to encourage them that to provide, even the small things makes huge differences. So, we are planning on having a fundraiser in our school, and whatever we collect, we want to, the students to come and donate it here for the, for, for any kind of thing that can help the public school. We are wondering if that's going to be acceptable and if there are right procedures that we can do and steps before we go ahead with our idea. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Talvashah. My apologies, I don't know if I'm reading this correctly or not, but out of curiosity, page number seven, can you review also what does the tuition reimbursement of $415,000 mean? And there's another line item, page eight of 10. What is the tuition private school, $3.6 million adjustment and such from, from the budget perspective? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? All right, seeing no one, Dr. Chase?
Sure. I'm going to try to address all the questions. Some of them overlap. Well, first of all, I'm so appreciative of you all coming out here and asking these questions because this is exactly what we need from our community to engage with us and to really understand this budget. The first question was talking about residency, essentially. When, and I'm familiar with East Hanover does, and many school districts do this, is they check to make sure that the students who are attending the school are in fact residents in the school. Otherwise, we'd be paying for them, and we wouldn't be getting taxpayer dollars. I'm happy to report that we already do that in Parsippany. We're already monitoring residency and have been for several years. So, for the gentleman who asked about if we were considering that, we already do that. There was another question about the classroom size last year. Prior to my arrival, the board waived class size. But, when I had spoken earlier and I talked about how our priorities are aligning with our instructional values and student well-being, that is going to be central to the conversation. And we do recognize that the larger the classes get, the, the, the less interactions there are between teachers and individual students. That's just a fact. It's in the literature. And I, I recognize that as you have children in this school district, you're concerned about that. And I want to tell you that I too am very concerned about that. We don't have an amount right now, but, you know, in those early literacy classrooms where children are learning how to read, we definitely want to keep class size small there. So, that is something that's going to be central to our conversations about in the budget, trying to maintain a class size that's reasonable. Somebody else asked, oh, the gentleman who has the mental health and well-being clinic. Thank you for doing that work. That's very important. We in schools are also addressing a lot of mental health challenges with our students. We do work with a broker who shops our health insurance rates. What we're seeing right now is, and I was just at a roundtable with many superintendents in the county, the rates that people were talking about were getting in the high teens. So, like 18, 19, 20. The state health benefits plan is at 30? 32 and a half percent, which, thank goodness, Parsippany's not in there. Otherwise, we'd be in worse shape. I can tell you that I probably look at the budget in very similar ways that you do because I'm fiscally conservative in that regard, and we are going to be looking at every single line item. But, as I've been saying, this is my 20-ish year in education, and I've done several budgets. There, there historically has always been some areas to trim, but we are cutting into the muscle of this organization right now. So, hopefully, the transparency that we provide during the budget process, and, and Dr. McHugh and I will be doing presentations and communicating more things out, will help you understand some of the pressures that we're facing. But, you're absolutely right to question if we're looking at everything, and I will hopefully through those conversations reassure you that we are in fact. But, I also just want to mention another pressure that I don't know if we gave a lot of attention to, and, and this is a very important one. We have students in our schools, we do a great job here in Parsippany, of keeping our special education students in district, which helps us on myriad reasons. One, it, it maintains cost control, but it also keeps our children in their home school. But, in some cases, we have children who are severely disabled and who cannot be educated in the programs that we provide here, and they have to go to out-of-district placements. We don't, although we anticipate and we provide some money in the budget in anticipation of those students going out, at any moment in time, any child can move into the district, and those costs are exorbitant. Just giving you an example, like, you could have $100,000 for school tuition. You add on transportation costs, which are somewhere north of 20 grand. If a child needs a nurse, you're paying like 90,000. So, you're educating students who go out of district at very high costs. Now, that's not an area we can cut. We don't even set those places, and, and we have to be very student-centric and give those students who live in the community what they need. But, it's another pressure because unlike our school district that is capped at a 2% tax cap levy, those out-of-district placement tuitions are not capped. They could charge whatever they want, and they are going up exponentially. So, hopefully, as the transparent process we use with the budget will help to reassure you and educate you as well as what we're facing. And if I didn't already say it, Dr. McHugh and I will be doing presentations. I'm in the process right now of building out a website for the district that will be specific to budget so that anybody in the community can go on and find answers to questions because school funding is, is a, is a complex situation. And, and with regard to how we compare to other districts, Dr. McHugh and I will be looking at that, the per pupil cost expenditure, and sharing some of that out in our messaging. And finally, well, no, I have the Goddard School. Thank you for coming. As a former preschool teacher myself at one point during my time, I could tell you, yes, preschool is a game changer, and as much as we can articulate together, let us know. Thank you for all you do with literacy and numeracy. It makes a difference. So, thank you for coming out. And Mr. Shaw, will you ask some specific questions about the board agenda that are related to financials? So, I'm going to punt those to Dr. McHugh if you have those answers, or you could get back to him with some specifics.
If you'd like, I can give you my phone number. Maybe you can give me a call tomorrow, because I was trying to multitask here, so I missed some of the motion numbers you said, so.
So, I hope I got everything. If not, feel free to reach out to me. I think my phone number is on the website. Always happy to talk about the schools here. And I echo your sentiments. This is an absolutely amazing community, and I'm really happy to be here and can work as much as we can, the Finance Committee and I, and Dr. McHugh, to do it as much as we can for getting our children the education they deserve.
Thank you, Dr. Chase.
Question?
Yes?
Excuse me, Dr. Chase. I'm superintendent, Dr. McHugh. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that, at least it used to be, roughly 67 to 70% of our budget is pretty fixed? Roughly?
I would say north of that, probably about 80%.
80% is fixed? So, that means as, as those costs go up, that budget goes up irregardless. There's no cutting, there's no trimming. So, in that pie of the 80%, if we have to cut, we're cutting out of that 20%, which could be anything like a program, or a sport, or just something other. But, those other, that, that one piece of the pie, that has to stay intact. We can't go trimming it.
So, the 80% to which you're referring is pretty much for salaries and benefits, if I'm correct?
Salaries, benefits, fixed costs at the minimum level. So, I mean, you would love to say you want to reduce costs and maybe through salary, but there's, you, there's, you have to stop at a certain point.
Correct.
So.
So, like, if the, like, in my house, my electric bill doubled, so the district's electric bill probably did something similar.
Yes, and when you're talking about that 80%, which is primarily comprised of salaries and benefits, you know, there are times where you have to cut from that 80%, which is
addressed.
what you're seeing in many communities. I could rattle off a, a bunch of them. I don't know if they'd be happy for me to publicly state them, but several school districts have had to cut staff. And when you cut staff, you cut programs. And I'm calling these things trade-offs because in order to maintain something on this side, you may have to trade off something on this side. But, we're going to be looking at every single thing in the budget very, very carefully to preserve what we have here in Parsippany. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much. That brings us to our roll call vote for superintendent's bulletin, number seven, items number one through 23, with addendum items 24 to 42 and read-ins. May I have a motion? Mr. DeVito? Mrs. Mayor? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Berrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Delafave?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Rea?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
Thank you very much. And that brings us to adjournment. There being no further business, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mrs. Abraham, Mr. Rea? Thank you very much.
Hi. Hi.
Oh.
Minutes over.
I did, we did the vote.
You said a motion.
A motion.
Oh, sorry. All in agreement? All in favor?
Aye.